Good afternoon. I'm going to open up our April 6, 2023 Conservation Commission meeting. It's taking place in the Wacoia Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, being broadcast live on local cable channel 18 and also streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website. Before we begin, if you would join me in a pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment of silence in memory of the Wampinawg Chief Vernon Silentrum Lopez, who has passed away. And I would also like you to remember our fellow citizens who are tremendously suffering under severe climate conditions that we're seeing consistently every day in the news. So, thank you. Okay. I will start the meeting off with public comment. If there's anyone here that would like to say something that's not related to issues that we have on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I will move to the 5:30 hearing. As you recall, last time we met, we closed the hearing. And our intent was to come here a half hour earlier tonight to deliberate on that particular hearing. So let me announce that. It's for Brendan P. Giblin, 90 Pompanessett Island Road. It is the proposed demolition of existing dwelling and appurtenances, construction and maintenance of a new single-family dwelling, garage with pile-supported guest suite above, in-ground swimming pool fencing, pool covers enclosure, new patios, landscaping, hardscaping, and Title V septic upgrade. The representative is Capeport Island's engineering. And again, this hearing was closed on March 23rd, and the commission will now deliberate and render a decision. There is no public comments during this deliberation. It is just a time for the commissioners to review regulatory language and apply it to everything that we did hear presented in the hearing itself. So, before we begin, I did ask all commissioners to bring their binders, because there is a lot in there, there's a lot of language that applies. And I know as I go through the binder, it can get pretty tough to find your way through all those different tabs. So I spent some time, some of the things that I want to address in tonight's deliberation, and I put together several pieces of regulatory language. Just to maybe streamline and help us get through the binder. So I'll open it up first to commissioners, and then I'll reserve what I have to say, or if you want to question some of the things that you see in the handout that I have. Anybody want to start?
Yeah, I'll start.
Okay, Steve.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I did a similar thing. I went through the bylaws and tried to figure this out, because, and I apologize to the board, I missed the two hearings in February and the first one in March. So I kind of was trying to catch up, running with this on March 23rd.
Sure.
So what I did, I started with, I went into Chapter 172, you know, Section 2 on the jurisdiction. It mentions about, you know, not building upon wetlands and jurisdictions, coastal storm flowage is in there. And then I went into Section 7.3 on the waivers, because I think you mentioned through that they applied for a waiver. I don't have the narrative with me here, but... So I was looking at the waivers, and then under, you know, Section 3 for waiver requirements, it mentions that such waivers are intended to be granted only in rare and unusual cases, only when resource protection would be enhanced relative to pre-existing conditions. Looking at the plan, I said, okay, yeah, they're enhancing the, you know, resource protection with the mitigation and so forth, but I'm not so sure that this is a rare and unusual case. So that was my, you know, first concern. And then, you know... Well, that was under 172-7.3 waiver of requirements.
That was under the bylaw section.
Bylaw section, yeah. 172-7.3 point A. So that was my first concern, saying, okay, I don't know if this is unusual or rare case. You know, the resource protection is being enhanced. So after that, I went into Regulation 25, which is land subject to coastal storm flowage. And under B, under Regulation 25, they have the definition of it. They mention about, you know, filling removing, altering topography of vegetation in that section, they mention about structures and so forth. And then, under Performance Standards, Paragraph 2, it said, "All effort should be made to avoid altering naturally vegetated areas within land subject to coastal storm flowage." Well, some of this property is native vegetation, it's untouched when I went out there, so some of it's going to be altered. I know it's going to be enhanced with plantings, but it's going to be altered from its natural state. So that was another concern that I had. And then Section 3 underneath that mentions about structures, construct a place within, on a lot within land subject to coastal storm flowage must be properly secured. I'm not too sure about, I know the garage will be secured because of being pounds above the flood elevation, but the pool and the walls and so forth, I'm concerned about that. And then Section 4 mentions about alterations within the A-zone within 100 feet of coastal water body, mentioned about vertical walls. And there are vertical walls on the front of this building which are within 100-foot buffer. So that was another concern of mine, so there's vertical walls. And then into Section 5, it mentions new structures in additions and substantial improvements to existing structures supporting a solid foundation. So I know this will be flood zone compliant, but the rear of the building is right on the velocity zone line and an A-zone line. And, you know, in real-world experience, that's just a line on a piece of paper. If you get in a storm with waves coming in, the waves aren't going to stop at that line, they're going to keep moving on. So there's some adjustments there. So that was another concern of mine. And then Section 6 mentions limits of construction in a velocity zone. And, you know, it goes through and said, you know, "She'll not destroy otherwise impede the function of any portion of land form," you know, "in a velocity zone," it mentions "new structures, foundation other than open pounds columns, new septic systems, roads, driveways, parking lots." So those are my main concerns, that this property, whereas an existing house, is expanding, I don't know how the square footage, but, you know, you can see it's growing in all sides, plus the pool, plus patio, plus walls, plus the garage and driveways where they're, you know, where they were minimal before. So I'm concerned that even though the mitigation is there, that this project doesn't meet the requirements of Chapter 172 and Regulation 25. And then, based on a recent court case, I know it's a zoning decision, but it mentions that upland only needs to be counted for new structures. And the court case mentioned that a wetland is not an upland, so this whole property is considered all wetland because it's in the flood zone, so there is no upland on it. So I'm concerned that even if this board passes it, the zoning board cannot pass it because there's no upland. You know, I understand, you know, there's an existing house there. If you say, okay, I want to tear this down and rebuild the house in a similar footprint and maybe expand it slightly or change it with the mitigation, you know, I think I would be all for it. But to me, this is, I don't think it meets the requirements of the 172 and 25. And for me, this project would be a no, for me. Based on all that.
Thank you. Alex, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yeah. And I think you outlined it beautifully and broke it down in a really easy-to-follow way. And it was your last point...
I could pass that around to it.
Your handwriting is lovely. Your last point is what I was going to say. If it was like a rebuild in a similar footprint without all the excess, all the appurtenances, I'd be for it. I'm struggling that it is way above and beyond what is currently there, and it's a no for me.
The handout that I provided, what I did was I went through not only our own wetlands bylaw and the regulations, but I also looked into 310 CMR, which is the state's wetland bylaw. And I started with the idea of coastal wetlands. And on the very first page, 310 CMR 204 definitions, which is really on page 18 in your binder, it says coastal wetlands are defined in MGL Chapter 131, Section 40, Paragraph 6. That's actually a typo in the state regulations. In reality, it's Paragraph 7. And I took Paragraph 7 from the state's website, and it reads, "The term coastal wetlands is used in this section," meaning Section 40. "It shall mean any bank, marsh, swamp, meadow, flat, or other lowland subject to tidal action or coastal storm flowage." So we do see terminology in the state regulations, and even in our own local bylaw, where words are used interchangeably. So for all practical purposes, the intent of the law is that land subject to coastal flow is called a coastal wetland. That was very clear in what Steve mentioned earlier, the land court decision. That judge upheld that. He said, it's undeniable. And then I started looking at additional places in the state regulations. And if you look at 310 CMR 1023, under Additional Definitions, we see it again. Resource area means any coastal bank, coastal wetland, and then on it goes. And then it even specifically refers to coastal 100-year storm flowage. On the second page of the regulations that I highlighted, I took our own Chapter 172 Wetlands bylaw. And I just, I took the full purpose of it, in case you haven't taken the time to look at that. But as Steve mentioned, I'm focusing on 172-2. And in that bylaw, we, the Town of Mashpee, are saying that coastal wetlands, again, keep in mind, Section 40, is a resource area. And it specifically mentioned coastal storm flowage or flooding lands. It goes on to say, "Lands within 100 feet of any of the aforesaid resource areas." So our bylaw, in all practical sense, is applying a buffer zone to coastal storm flowage. The state specifically says it does not have a buffer zone in their regulations. If you look at the third page of the regulations that I brought in, there you have everything that's subject to protection under the Act. And it's listed, under A, "Any coastal wetland," which Section 40 says is land subject to coastal flow. So we really have an example where the state's regulations are arguing with the intent of the law. But it does say, under Section 2, "Activities within the buffer zone." These areas, subject to jurisdiction identified in 310 CMR, 10021B through F, do not have a buffer zone. So it really gets complicated, you know? What do we really have here? Well, there is another regulation that I want to call your attention to, and that is Regulation 310 CMR 1001. And that's the purpose. And it says, "It's intended solely for the use and administering the Wetlands Act," which is the state law, 13140. "Nothing contained herein should be construed as preempting or precluding more stringent protection of wetlands or other natural resources by local bylaw." So our local bylaw supersedes the state law. We have a stronger law than what the state... So this whole issue of, is coastal storm flowage offered a buffer zone? It's a moot point on the state level. I don't care. They can figure that out on their own. But our bylaw does give it a buffer zone. Whether it was intended or not, it's there, and it's been there since 1997. At town meeting, 1997, Article 33, and approved by the Attorney General. So my quandary is this. When I look at Regulation 25, Regulation 25, under Number 7, setbacks definitions, it says, "A setback is the minimum distance from the inland boundary of a coastal feature at which an improved activity or alteration may take place." Then it goes on to say, "Setback shall be maintained in areas contiguous to," and there's the term again, "coastal wetlands," which is land subject to coastal flow. That's why it's in Regulation 25. It goes on to say that the setback shall be extended a minimum of either 50 feet from the inland boundary of the coastal feature or 25 feet inland at the edge of the coastal buffer zone, whichever is further land. The problem I have with this project is it's a raise-and-replace, the house is coming down. That house is legally permitted. It's there. And if the owners of that property want to rebuild that house, they're more than entitled to rebuild that house. If they want to rebuild it a little bit bigger, then they have to come to us. And we have to deal with that increased size, the mitigation that comes with it, according to our bylaws. But all of the rest of what was presented, the patios, the pool, the garage, that wasn't there. That's all new stuff that's coming in. And that is where, when you look at Regulation 25, where's the setback? This is brand-new stuff. And I'm at a quandary, thinking, we need to apply our law. Whether it was intended or not, Mashpee Chapter 172 specifically gives land subject to coastal flow a buffer zone. And it's repeated in Regulation 24, it's repeated again in Regulation 29. Consistently in our regulations, we see the buffer zone defined as protecting all the resource areas listed in 172-2. And land subject to coastal flow is sitting right in that law. So, you know, I look at this project, and I think there is a lot of regulatory language here that really goes up against my ability to say I'm on the court. And I know, when you get to the very end of the handout that I gave you, all I did was I took the various decisions that came out of that land court decision. If that land court decision, let me back up a second. If that litigation from the Andrew trustees was against this commission, not the ZBA, the results would be the same. The judge is saying, look at the definition of coastal wetlands. The judge is saying, look at the intent that the state has put to protect land subject to coastal flow, which is called coastal wetlands. Then the judge says, where are the wetland setbacks? We have them. They're right there in Regulation 25. And it says, "For coastal wetlands." And the state law says what coastal wetlands are. And we have it listed in our own bylaw. So I just, I can't get beyond that. I just can't. And that's where I am. I know Marjorie, go ahead.
If you follow that through, as you just did, very clearly, your state law takes a second place, your local law supersedes. And you walk it through the second half of the application, not where they're legal, but all the other new stuff, where does it take you?
Microphone.
So sorry. What a shame, you missed all of that intellectual discourse. Thank you so much.
I might have to say it over again.
I know. Okay, so now, what I'm trying to tease out is, everything you just laid out is the way that I would read it as well, and I am sure everybody else is grateful that you put this together. And it's very clear to me that our local bylaws and regs supersede the state. The state does that fairly regularly in all of the discussions on what, you know? In no instance do we want it to supersede, da-da-da-da-da. So taking that, I'm wondering if you would share with us what your bottom line is for the, what we, I agree with you, what I consider new activity projects, not the replace, not the raise-and-replace of the existing facility, which is, I agree, legal. Where does it take you then? If you follow that as you did, you're at the end now, and that tells you, you say what to their application? Do we have to separate it all out?
No, our task right now is to deliberate how we want to frame a motion...
I'm sorry, that's exactly where I was going.
Based on the evidence that was presented in the hearing that's now closed. We have all the information. We've got all the maps, we've got the mitigation plans. What we were up against at our last meeting, and I know Steve said, you know, you seem to be at odds, the way you're looking at different things, and I made the suggestion that we don't have to close an issue, we can close and deliberate. And that's why we're here.
Right, right.
We closed a hearing, we're deliberating. And it's given me a lot of time to go through all of the statutory language, regulation numbers, both on the state level and here on our local level. And I'm not at all comfortable. But I'm comfortable with the house. It's a legally permitted structure. It can come out, and a new one can go in. And the new, as I said earlier, it could be even a little bit bigger if there's justification, and then we have to deal with that. But all the other stuff, no, I just don't see it. The garage, the pool, the patio, the, I believe it's a freestanding deck. And they're in the velocity zone, and I know, I pressed for the hydrocat figures for the drainage and the runoff, and it all looks good. I mean, like Steve said, it looks great on paper, but when the storms start rolling in, water doesn't care what's on a piece of paper.
That's right.
And now I'm looking at the regulatory language for all of these appurtenances that are associated with this house is being replaced. I don't see that the language in our laws that require us to pay attention to allow it. I just don't see it. It's not an interpretation. It's black and white.
Oh, that's the rub, isn't it?
Well, when I first looked at it, I thought, you know, and I might have even said to somebody, am I looking at this the wrong way? You know, I did a lot of, I did a lot of questioning, a lot of thinking, a lot of reading, not only on our own laws, but on the state's. I went to MACC, I looked at stuff, I looked everywhere. And it all just kept coming back to, your local bylaw is more stringent than the state. So push the state aside, for now. Look at that local bylaw. And we have it. And again, it's not 90 Pompanessett Island Road. Any project that comes before us with new materials that are going to go in to an already legally permitted house, it's the same situation. As I see it, and I'm reading it, it's a black and white.
So for part of our deliberation, I mean, what I would benefit from, Mr. Chairman, for you and for others who have been on the commission longer, have deeper knowledge of the local application, do we have the authority? I don't know the answer to this. Do we have the authority to separate out any pieces or parts of the application so that we can approve this piece of it and separate out this? We don't have that authority at all.
We had a proposal, and that proposal was brought to hearing. Evidence was all presented, we questioned. And this hearing, I mean, it was continued, continued, it was a lot to it.
I remember.
So our role is, we're deliberating on what was presented, we're going to, I'm going to entertain a motion on what was presented, either up or down, whatever it's going to be. And, but separating out, saying, well, we'll approve this, but we won't approve that.
That's not, that's not, no, that's not doable. So...
They can come back.
They can come back.
This isn't saying that they're...
As long as you include that in the motion without prejudice, they can come back.
Yeah.
They can not only come back, if they feel as though they've been aggrieved or wronged in a decision that we make, if we went down that road, they can appeal it. They can go to the DEP and ask for a superseding order of conditions. They can appeal, bless you. They can appeal any decision that we make based on our local bylaw to principal superior court. There's an appeal structure in our bylaw, it tells you exactly what to do. So there's a lot of options for an applicant that doesn't get a project approved, but I don't even know if we're there yet. I mean, I'm getting the sense that we might be, but I'll see what kind of motions come after. If you have more questions or comments...
No, that, those were the two questions I had, on jurisdiction, really, I mean.
All right. And I hate to rush the other two commissioners, but I know we had a half hour scheduled for this. Aaron, is there anything you want to add to it, or?
No, I think Alex and Steve, and you've all discussed everything that I had questions about, so I'm comfortable.
Sandy?
No, I'm comfortable to add all of this.
Drew, I'm going to let you commit to the deliberations as our agent, if there's anything you want to say or add to it.
No. I don't really have anything else to add, other than what you, what I've supplied in my comments, so no other comments.
And you all have Drew's comments on your agenda?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But Drew, just to clarify, all your comments, I think we've got three different iterations as we went along, but at the end of the day, the conditions that you said would need to be met can't be met.
Which one specifically?
I think, I think we went into a circular debate on that.
Well, my only condition is based on the comments that I have, where that if there was a closing issue, there would have to be submission of a sign. Which is definitely doable.
Oh, yeah, that's doable, but given where we're at today...
Well, I just said my comments stand as is, I have no further comments.
You have no further comments?
Yeah.
Okay, then. Right on schedule. Our deliberations seem to be finished, unless somebody has any closing comment or question? No? And with...
I just want to say, I wish during this, every time that we continued, that they came back with real changes to the plan. And I think at the last second, the comment was made, like, oh, we can really shrink the pool now.
Yeah, I remember, yes, I remember too.
And it was like they were trying to call our bluff, it felt like. And we were spelling it out all along, like, no, this is in the velocity zone, this is in the flood zone, why is this needed? Like, push it back, and it didn't happen. So I think that that really, I just want to speak to that, I think that really led to why we're where we're at also.
All right, I can make a motion. Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion for the 5:30 hearing for Brendan P. Giblin, 90 Pompanessett Island Road, for a denial of the notice of intent filing, if I said that correctly. And the reasons are, under Chapter 172 of our regulations and bylaws, 172-2 for jurisdiction, 172... bylaws, 172-2 for jurisdiction, 172-7.3 point A waiver of requirements, and Regulation 25, Section B for the definition, and Section C under performance standards. And under C would be Note 2, Note 3, Note 4, Note 5, and Note 6.
Two, three, four, five, and six.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, yes, correct. Thank you.
I will second that.
And there's a second.
I think that covers everything that I think that we need, yeah.
Let me open up the motion that's now been made and seconded on the floor. I'll open that up to discussions amongst the commissioners. If there's any clarification that you have, or if you have an intent to amend the motion, this would be the time.
Now, I just want to thank the three of you in particular, Steve, for all of the research, because those were the numbers that some of us were looking for. So that's my only comment.
I would, I would request to amend the motion to also include Regulation 25 Number 7, the whole concept of setbacks, because a lot of this project was new work, and it just doesn't meet that part of the regulation as well. So that would go back to you, Steve, to either agree or disagree to amend your motion.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman. So add Regulation 25, under C performance standards, Section 7 for setbacks, critical erosion area.
So I'll second that amendment, is that right?
Yes. Okay, so we now have a motion that has been amended and seconded. I'll open that up for discussion, if there is any. Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote on the amendment.
Amendment to the amendment.
That'll take us back to the new motion, okay? Roll call on the amended motion. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well, so that carries. So now the motion is amended, as stated, and it has been seconded. Any further discussion on that before I call for a vote? Hearing none. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries. And again, that's a denial without prejudice, so the applicant is certainly within their rights to come back with a new proposal, or to file an appeal with either the state, or if they want to, on the local bylaws, they have a right to appeal through that venue as well. And those regulations are all outlined in the laws that are found on our website. Okay, just give me a second to clean up here. Drew, just a clarification.
Should we use the pre-agenda stuff until we get to... And then can we make like a blanket...
You can't do a blanket continuance.
You have to do it.
So arcane.
You have to open each one.
Each one individually.
Do we need to roll call?
Yep.
Why, why are we the only board that votes calls?
Because it's the chairman's discretion. It's for accuracy of record keeping and minutes.
Okay, so we're just going to move right into six. Okay, now calling the 6 o'clock hearing for Timothy W. Leadham, trustee, Shoestring Bay nominee, trust 2, 352 Mashpee Neck Road. This is for a proposed gravel parking area, relocation of shed, landscaping, and mitigation plantings, representative Cape and Islands Engineering. There is a request to continue this hearing to 4/20/23 at 6:00 p.m. The public hearing notice was not published in the 3/31/23 Mashpee Enterprise. So I will entertain a motion for a continuance.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Just a second.
Second.
Thank you, Alex. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. Now calling the 6:03 hearing for Ryan and Kristen Lenhart, 81 Bluff Avenue. Proposed raise and replace existing dwelling. Upgrade septic system with new IA Title V system. Landscaping, hardscaping, representative Cape and Islands Engineering. This hearing has also been continued to 4/20/23 at 6:03. Public hearing notice was not published in the 3/31 edition of the Mashpee Enterprise. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Thank you, Alex. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. Now calling the 6:06 hearing for Francis V. and Christine L. Castlucci, 23 Keelway. Proposed raise and replace of existing pool, shed, and utilities. Representative Gade Masonary Landscaping. This is also continued to 4/20/23 at 6:06. Public hearing notice was not published in the 3/31 edition of the Mashpee Enterprise. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Alex. Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries unanimously. I'm looking at the clock. When did I ever get ahead of myself when I called?
It'll never happen again.
Are we at 6:09?
You've got one more continuance before the next hearing.
Yeah.
I think it's worthwhile.
Should I bring out the cake?
I just didn't want to call that 6:09 hearing.
You can't call the 6:09 hearing until now it's 6:09.
I wanted to make sure it was 6:09, actually.
This is back to the future, Mr. Chairman.
I've never done that. Somebody should write that down. I beat the clock.
We hit it, we hit it.
Okay, we're at 6:09. Now calling the 6:09 hearing for Todd A. West, 362 Monomoskoy Road. Proposed septic upgrade to an innovative alternative system. Representative Meyer and Sons Incorporated. This hearing is to be continued to 4/20/23 at 6:09. Public hearing notice was not published in the 3/31 Mashpee Enterprise. I would re...
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Steve.
You hesitated.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
You're in the future now.
Okay. Roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries unanimously.
So is there anything in the pre or post we can go over?
Okay, we have a minute.
Yeah, about two minutes.
Do we start at the top?
Yes.
Sure. Give my voice a break.
I'll just get, I guess I'll start with the updates. Red Brook Road, Calvert, ongoing grant research and permitting and planning stages. Myself, the assistant agent, DPW director, and some assistants from Falmouth, we're all looking at potential grants, and so that's ongoing.
Is there anything in ARPA funds for that this cycle?
In what funds?
ARPA.
I don't...
ARPA?
I don't know what ARPA...
They come out of Barstool County?
Not familiar.
I'll look at that. I'll take a look at that.
Sure. I did try to solicit updates for the upper Quashett restoration from Horsey-Witten. Unfortunately, I did not get them in time for tonight's meeting, but as soon as they come in, the consultant did indicate he's got some updates for us, and I will forward them on via email to everybody once they come in. Bylaw review subcommittee updates. So the bylaw review subcommittee, we are down one member, so I would, at this point, ask the commission if anyone, aside from Paul and Alex, is interested in joining the bylaw review subcommittee to make it, bring it back up to the former number of three. So...
I'd be interested in that.
Yeah.
Yes!
So we have a commissioner stepping forward. Do we have to vote on that?
I don't think so. Yeah, I mean...
Because we weren't voted on to it. We just, we just like agreed to create it one meeting, didn't we?
Yeah, I don't think vote, I mean, unless you feel for record keeping, it's warranted.
I don't think so. The minutes will reflect...
Yeah, exactly.
That Ms. Godfrey volunteered to step forward?
Yeah.
Thank you. You're going to love it.
Tons of fun.
You're going to love it.
You want to go there?
Yeah.
I'll stop there.
I don't know if love is the word.
I'm going to stop the post, the pre and post hearing agenda, because we have reached the correct time. Now calling the 6:12 hearing for Paul J. and Catherine M. Thurston, 25 Menemsha Road. Proposed construction of an in-ground pool, hardscaping, and landscaping. Representative is Flaherty and Stefani Incorporated. This is continued from March 23, 2023, and it is a notice of intent. Good evening, gentlemen. If I can have your names for the record?
Yes. Good evening. Mark Flaherty, professional engineer from Plymouth, Mass.
Brad Holmes, professional wetland scientist, Massachusetts certified arborist with environmental consulting and restoration.
Paul Thurston, applicant, 9 Dean's Hollow Road, Mashpee.
Thank you.
So maybe I can start, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
That would be great.
So at the last hearing, we spent some time explaining what Mr. Thurston, and Katie, and Paul had in mind for their, their plunge pool, their seven-by-nine-foot plunge pool at, outside the buffer zone to, the 50-foot buffer zone to Dean's Pond. Towards the conclusion, the commission seemed to ask us to come back with the answering four essential questions. One was, there was a question about the grade coming up from the property line to the edge of the plunge pool. And there weren't any proposed contours shown in the plan. The commission asked for me to come back to show some proposed contours. We did that. The elevation of the, of the pool itself will be elevation nine. So, and what was, we're talking about a foot or a foot and a half of fill that was going to be on the pond side of the plunge pool. That fill would be, would be bumped up against a proposed berm, so there would be no runoff towards a neighbor's property. So that's, there's a planted berm that we added, that we can talk about there a little bit later. The second item that was, was, came up was, what is the groundwater in the area of the pool? You know, was the bottom of the pool going to be above or below the, the actual groundwater? I was out there doing test bits with two other gentlemen who conducted the test bits, along with Mr. Thurston. We came up and put a soil log on the plan that showed that, that high, high groundwater was at elevation of three, when the bottom of the, bottom of the pool is going to be at elevation five. So where the bottom of the pool would be two feet above the high groundwater that was established. The test pit was done at the 50-foot buffer, just downgrade of the pool itself. So to answer that question one more time, we found groundwater at elevation three, the bottom of the pool will be elevation five. So where the bottom of the pool will be two feet above the high groundwater. So if nothing else, there's a factor of safety involved, so that the pool will not be, will not, will not be in groundwater. The third item that was requested was to come up with a more complete mitigation planting schedule. We have, Brad Holmes has done a nice job at coming up with a schedule of plantings and the location of their plantings. He can talk a little more, a little farther about the extent of which the plantings, you know, there, we have the required amount of plantings from the conservation bylaw, and then we have our proposed amount of, of plantings. And we can talk about that going forward. Finally, the fourth item was, one of the commission members wanted to be sure that the pool was held down, and was no possibility of any hydrostatic pressure that would cause the pool to rise if there was a groundwater situation. We're showing, we're showing on the plans that helical piles will, will be, will be put down. The helical piles is a small auger that would go down to, into the ground, and would anchor the, the pool would be anchored to those helical piles. So those are the four items that we feel the commission has asked us to provide. We feel like we've done so in a satisfactory manner. So right now, if I can have Brad just discuss the mitigation plantings, and the quantity of the plantings, and, and what he has in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. If you could go to the, the next screen, Drew, that'd be awesome. Thank you. We're, in accordance with the regulations, we were required to have at least a one-to-one ratio of mitigation plantings. And because Mr. Thurston was more than happy to add additional native plantings, we had a little fun here. And we've got to a 2.9 to one ratio of mitigation proposed. We have 1,252 square feet of removal of lawn to conversion with native plantings, with a wide variety of species, from saplings to ground cover plants. We have about 20 saplings, 47 shrubs, and 83 ground cover and native grasses. All clustered so that we have groupings of native plantings which work together well, and a wide variety, as you can see, proposed. So we think that we met and exceeded the ratio of required mitigation, and at the end of the day, I think this will be a really pretty landscape to look at, but also provide a great ecological benefit to the site. So I can go further, but the plan speaks for itself, and it has a step-by-step task that a contractor could perform with some oversight from a professional.
Thank you. Mr. Thurston, do you have something you wanted to add?
I would, thank you, Chairman. I would just ask that if there is, specifically last time we were at the hearing, the attorney didn't, was recognized, but we don't know who she's working for, and if they even have standing for this project. So if she does come up and speaks tonight, we just would like that she be, you know, name who she's working for, and what their address is, primary address, and specifically to the location of the property. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will first open up to the commissioners for questions or comments based on what we now have before us.
Would you want comments from the public first on that? Does that make sense?
A typical order of events is you ask commissioners' comments, then the public, and then mine.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Paul's small.
Okay, just double check in.
What I do traditionally is, I go to all the commissioners, and then myself, and then I'll go to the public, and then come back to Drew for any closing statements.
Thank you.
So again, I'm with the commissioners now. If there are questions or comments relative to what's just been presented, in addition to perhaps maybe what you had last week or two weeks ago.
All right, I'll start again.
Okay.
So I understand all the changes, and it makes sense. So one of the comments you mentioned was you said that the, the bottom of the pool would be at elevation five, but in the cross-section on your plan, it shows that the pool is five feet high, so bring it down to elevation four.
So it would be...
If you have the top of the pool at nine, it's a five-foot height pool.
On the cross-section that I'm looking at is that it's, on the basis of, it's five-two, it would be somewhere between elevation four and five, yes.
It says, yeah, it says 4.4 inches, and then eight inches bottom, so that's five feet.
And it would be, there's probably a small amount of pool above the elevation of the grade. So it's just going to extend, it wouldn't, the grade's not going to come perfectly up to the pool. Pool would be, there would be a, maybe a small nine-inch rise or so.
So, okay, thank you. So I'm going to go back to the previous applicant, and the same thing. This is totally in a velocity zone, and go back in to chapter 172-2, notes jurisdiction of... dash two notes jurisdiction of no construction in a land subject to coastal storm flowage. And then one seventy-two dash seven-point-three-point-A waiver requirements. I don't see whether this is a rare and unusual request. I understand that the resource protection of, from the pump would be enhanced with the plantings, but adding a plunge pool to me is not a rare and unusual case. And then it goes back into regulation twenty-fives, you know, B, C for the performance standards in section three, four, five, six, and seven. So to me, this is, you know, putting a new structure in a flood zone that is, will act, and I think in one of the, in, you know, section four mentions vertical walls. So even though the grade will be tapered, there's vertical walls there that are sticking up above the grade. And then I do have some concerns that it's within a foot of the groundwater, too. So, you know, so, you know, to me, I don't think this project meets the requirements of one seventy-two regulations and regulation twenty-five for land subject to coastal storm flowage.
Are there questions or comments from commissioners? Alex?
Yeah, I don't think it meets the standards, especially for, this is, I mean, it would basically be asking for a waiver, and it's for a pool. So I don't, I don't see the compelling need. And when you, when you look at the velocity zone, and I got this plan, all I could keep doing, my eye just kept coming back to, it's velocity zone fourteen, elevation fourteen. And when I was out there, it wasn't even a particularly stormy day, and I could like hear the waves crashing like right over Dean's Pond on the other side. And yeah, I, given all the regulations that stand behind why this is, we are able to say no to this, like I'm in the camp of, this is not approvable.
Marjorie?
I had the same concerns that Alex did, and I'm anxious to hear what our agent has to say, so.
Let me go through commissioners first, and we'll get back to Drew.
Okay.
All set?
Yeah.
Erin?
I have the same concerns.
Same concerns. Sandy?
I have the same concerns.
Mr. Chairman, I add, there is no upland on this property, too, also.
Correct.
So the calculations would not be correct.
Correct. I have some concerns as well, based on just the language that we used on a prior hearing tonight. It's land subject to coastal flow. Every lot is unique, so I'm not saying the lots are the same, but the last one had a pool at a velocity zone. It was a new appurtenance. This is a new appurtenance. It's in a velocity zone. If, if it was only an idea of mitigation, I would even render, my opinion, that, I don't think it's opinion, it's based on the chart, if land subject to coastal flow is a resource area, you are in that resource area. You're in it. You're not in a buffer zone. The mitigation that's being proposed is for buffer zones to Dean's Pond and the wetland delineation. But the lot itself is in a resource area. So when you look at that mitigation chart, you're right down to, and you could say non-reparating because it doesn't touch the water, but you're at a five times a figure. I looked at it quick, four hundred, I believe it's four-hundred-and-fifty-six square feet of disruption on the plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
That didn't change, right?
No.
So I would calculate it out as two-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty, and that's a five-X ratio, because you are in the resource area, inside it. It's a resource area. The bylaw specifically classifies it as a resource area, one seventy-two-two. And we have regulation twenty-five, which calls it a coastal wetland, which the state calls land subject to coastal flow. And it is land subject to coastal flow. It's a resource area. But again, I'm gonna go right back to regulation twenty-five-seven. Where's the setback? This is a brand-new project. It needs to have a setback according to our regulations. And that's found in regulation twenty-four, regulation twenty-nine, regulation twenty-five, chapter one seventy-two-two. It's everywhere. I don't think it was a typo. I think it was the intent of the people in the town of Mashpee as far back as nineteen-eighty-eight to say, hey, wait a minute. We need to protect our resource areas. And they listed it because the state listed it.
Mm-hmm.
And they created that buffer zone. So I have, you know, those are my concerns. I'll go to the public for any questions or?
I can address, just before we go to the public, and I, we kind of had a little bit of back and forth on the resource area. It's definitely a resource area, and you have additional protection, the land subject to coastal flowage under your, under your regulations. But it's different than a bordering vegetated wetland or a stream.
Absolutely.
So there's different performance standards. So what you want to, what we want to make sure is work within land subject to coastal storm flowage isn't gonna have any storm impact, adverse impact to storm, impacts such as if we were going to put up a vertical wall that would reflect waves, if you were going to rebuild the house or construct a new house, we'd have to raise it on piles and allow for the floodwaters. This pool is going to have no adverse impact to land subject to coastal flowage because if a wave were to come in at fourteen feet, it's just gonna be fully over that area anyway. So it's not gonna deflect a storm wave onto another property. We've graded that so that it's a gentle slope. It's gonna have more vegetation now than it has with lawn. And I'm not here to tell you how to regulate land subject to coastal flowage, but if you're going to start denying everything within the flood zone, I mean, and putting a buffer zone on it, I mean, you'd be looking at taking the FEMA map and then extending a buffer zone off all those properties and within all those shaded areas, not allowing any sort of improvements or any, any sort of activity with the thought of working, with the same strictness of working in a, in a bordering vegetated wetland. It doesn't, I mean, I think you're, that's, that's a difficult task. I think that, one, I don't think that's the intent of land subject to coastal flowage, but two, I think you're, you're gonna have a difficult road. But I just wanted to put that out there for the commission before you open up the public. Thank you.
I think every commissioner fully understands that no two resource areas are the same. That's why they all have their individual characteristics. But the bottom line is, our regulatory language says it is a resource area. And when I look at the mitigation charts for calculation, it's, you're in it. You're not in a buffer zone. You are in that resource area. And that's, that's where I'm coming from. I'm just, I didn't write the law. I wasn't living in Mashpee back in nineteen-eighty-eight or whenever regulation twelve came into existence. I did work on regulation twelve on the bylaw subcommittee because that has just been updated recently. I think, in fact, I have the date on it, April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. And I assume you must have used that regulation when you put your mitigation figures together.
We're certainly in the buffer zone to the bordering vegetated wetlands.
Absolutely.
And we're in the flood zone, no doubt.
Right.
I think the project would be better with the mitigation to account for the, you know, work in the buffer zone, did not propose any, and just say, hey, we're in the resource area anyway, so we're not gonna propose any mitigation. But I think the project is a good project overall. I mean, we're talking about a very small improvement. You're taking out an area of four-hundred-and-fifty square feet of lawn that could be fertilized and maintained, and putting in a patio and a pool where you're reducing the amount of fertilizer potential. And then you're adding two-point-nine-to-one of new plantings and reducing that lawn area. But before, I would ask the commission, before you send it out to public comment, if we could hear from Drew. But that's your choice.
That is my choice.
Right.
Thank you. All set?
Thank you.
I'll now entertain any comments from the public, if there are any. Yes, ma'am.
Ask her to limit it. Ask her to keep it.
Before you begin, certainly we want your name for the record, but there's been a request from the property owner to have you identify who you work with or represent for the testimony you're going to be giving. And if we could stay right on task, I know we have a copy of your letter. Stay right on task with the points and get through this as quickly as we can.
As I noted in my earlier comment letters.
Excuse me?
I represent Glenn McCarthy and Joan Quilty. They are, Ms. Quilty is a neighbor, not an immediate abutter. Mr. McCarthy lives a little further away, but still in the neighborhood. And although I appreciate Mr. Thurston thinking I'm an attorney, I think most of you know I am not. I'm a wetland scientist and a land use planner. So I think you all have copies of my more current comment letter of April third. Just, you know, very quickly, it's nice to see that the mitigation was increased, but the landscape firm doesn't do what it should in this kind of a design. The mitigation isn't good for wildlife because it's in little teeny plots instead of a big piece. The groundwater, we, we still don't know where that is. I know they've been out there. I don't know why they haven't given us an elevation, a surface water elevation on the pond. It would have been really easy while they were there, but they don't have it. And so we still don't know about that. And I've got a number of other things, however, considering the comments that the commission has made about your own regulations tonight and in the interest of saving time for you, because you do have other hearings that I think you're gonna hear tonight. You know, the waiver issue looms very large together with the setback. Clearly, there is no place that a setback can be provided. The regulation, I believe, based on your previous discussion, for work in land subject to coastal swarm flowage, which is a resource area under your bylaw, would allow for things like the upgrading of the house to make it flood compliant and things like that. However, in the waiver section, it clearly says that you're supposed to weigh how compelling the need for the request is. And it says, other non-compelling extremes, for example, would be the need for a swimming pool as an appurtenance to an already existing house. So I think the waiver regulation already looked at the potential for exactly this kind of a project and said, no, this won't work. And so I know it's difficult because the commission hasn't, in the past, in the immediate past, applied the regulations this way. And it requires a change of mindset, particularly for the consulting community bringing projects before you. Most, most of my work, as Drew is aware, is representing applicants and not neighbors. So I do a lot of design work. And it's just one of those things that happens. And unless the commission decides it's going to change its regulation for a while, we all have to deal with what we have to deal with. And I appreciate very much the time that clearly all of you put in to looking at your regulations, again, in light of that land court case.
We are, excuse me, we are currently working on regulation twenty-five with the bylaw review subcommittee. Right now, we've had our first meeting, and we have a lot more of them to go because there's a lot in there.
It's a, it's a hard place to be. I've been on your side of the table, and it's a lot of work. And we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Hard to see with that chart. Hearing none. Drew, I'll go to you for your comments.
Sure. So my only comments on this, I guess my most relevant comments are acknowledging full well the waiver requirements. And I know everyone's focused on the compelling need when it comes to appurtenances like swimming pools. But I think taking a look at the existing site conditions and what's offered in exchange for something should also be considered. And when you look at the waiver section, you've got three criterias, not just one. How compelling is the need? To what degree are normal standards being asked to be put aside? Is the request for relaxing of standards minor, moderate, or major in scope and impact? And thirdly, to what degree will compensatory mitigation measures offset the impacts of wave standards and result in a significant enhancement of the capacity of the resource area and/or adjacent buffer to protect wetland values of chapter one seventy-two, section one? So that's where my comments are gonna come from, those second and third waiver requirements or waiver considerations. So looking at this and the relatively small footprint of the pool that's being proposed, and then you've got mitigation, and I do have some comments regarding the mitigation that I'll get to shortly. Considering that you have a property that is entirely lawn going up to the abutting Pompanesset Beach Association property and that's subsequent to that, Dean's Pond, you have no naturally vegetated buffer here other than a thin strip of bordering vegetated wetland associated with Dean's Pond. So considering the pool size, the existing conditions of the lot, which is all lawn, and its proximity to Dean's Pond in a severely diminished buffer zone abutting the pond directly, I, in my opinion, believe that this deserves a waiver because I think it's going to dramatically improve the existing conditions on the lot. And the installation of a pool, I don't believe, in my opinion, is going to adversely affect the performance standards for velocity zone and flood zone with a relatively small footprint. My comments in regards to the mitigation is that, and this was made known at the previous hearing, all mitigation should be clumped together in one continuous buffer strip. It makes no sense to segment it out the way it's presented on this revised plan. So if the commission were inclined to approve this project, I would, my recommendation would be to move all separate parts of the mitigation into one continuous buffer right along the south property line, which is perfectly in line with regulation twelve. It's quite clear in that regulation where mitigation should go and why it should go there. And again, I also mentioned specifically about Arbor Vitae not being a very, even though it's on the cooperative list extension, it shouldn't be, in all honesty. It's a landscape plant. It's a screening plant. It offers zero wildlife habitat value, in my opinion. And that should be swapped out with something else and added into this buffer relocated along the southern property line. So no other comments.
Can I come back with a question?
Yeah.
If that were to be swapped out, what would be the preferred species?
You could do eastern red cedar. You could do shad bush. We can take a look at some other.
Yeah, certainly. Okay.
Drew, do you think the amount of mitigation plantings is enough, given the flood zone?
Yeah, it's two-point-nine-to-one, two-point-nine-one-to-one is the ratio. So it's really above and beyond what the chart calculates out. And I understand it's a resource area and the chart goes by buffer zone and the waiver standards. I'm crystal clear on all of that.
Right.
I do feel that, given that this is entirely lawn and there's just nothing there, that this will result in an enhancement relative to the impact that a pool would create in the velocity zone. That's my, that's just my opinion. So I think that that second and third waiver criterion should be looked at equally as the demonstration of compelling need because of the existing conditions on this lot. They're not getting into naturally vegetated areas like ninety Pompanesset Island was.
So would you feel the same way if the area between the walking path and Dean's Pond was properly vegetated the way it's supposed to be?
It's PBA property. It's a different ownership.
I understand it's different ownership, but if PBA was maintaining it as they're supposed to be without mulch and landscaping tarps or whatever underneath it and like four plants, if that was an actual thick buffer, would you feel the same way?
If that was a buffer? No, probably not. But it is. I mean, I, I don't know how far back I can go in time to see what that existing condition is on PBA property. That's a different subject matter, to be honest. It's a different property. But to answer your question, if that were fully vegetated? But to answer your question, if that were fully vegetated, then no, I wouldn't have the same point because it's just not. And I can't really tie it back to any specific violation because it's been that way since I started with the town. So I don't have any sort of violation to go on.
But I thought that that was being maintained for a restoration because of the willow and what was in there that they took out.
Are you talking about the immediate area seaward of the walking path, not above, between that and the property line?
Yep, seaward of the walking path.
Right. I, yeah, I agree, that could be more robust. There's no question about it. From my experience in the history with that, it was 100% Eurasian bittersweet, there was nothing else growing there, and gray willow as well. So it got treated, it got eradicated, it got replanted up. Did it get replanted up to the standards that we would like to see? No, it didn't.
So where do you?
Is there an opportunity to enhance that? Absolutely. I think the PBA has always been willing to try and enhance buffer zones around Dean's Pond, so I would have the utmost confidence that they would be able to enhance that area and do it willingly.
So Drew, so you're saying just because of the size of pools, so small, it's sort of, you know, the minimums with the plantings there, but then you want the plantings all along that?
All along the southern edge of the property line as one continuous buffer strip, not spotted buffer strips.
Right.
It should be all contiguous. And I just, you know, I understand that pools, I understand, number one, demonstration of compelling need. Nobody's ever going to be able to satisfy that with appurtenances like pools, garages, and patios.
We had one. We had a compelling need for a couple two years ago.
I'm talking from this point forward.
Okay.
I don't want to get into history, but from this point forward, focusing on this project, every lot is different, every lot has different circumstances. So I'm looking at it not because I want these folks to have a pool, I'm looking at it to see, okay, let's look at the existing condition, which is all lawn, and what are we getting in exchange for this? And what is the real impact of this plunge pool on the velocity zone?
So you say one thing outweighs the other.
So you kind of weigh out the different, you know, aspects of this and see what, you know?
So you don't think it's a disservice allowing somebody to put in the footprint of this pool in a velocity zone that's at elevation 14 feet and they're putting it in at elevation five feet or nine feet? I mean, wave action is going to hit that. We've been seeing increased storms with higher waves. You don't think that that's doing a disservice?
Well, I wouldn't use the term disservice. What I would use is adverse impact, which is the standard that is in every regulation and its resource area. So the adverse impact here is to what degree is that storm surge going to be diverted by a pool of the dimensions of this size, taking into consideration the full-scale development of this entire area? How much more of an adverse impact is this pool going to create compared to all the existing conditions around here?
I don't know that you can then bring that argument in, given what we just had, what we just spoke about.
I guess my bottom, my biggest point is that I don't believe that a pool this size is going to result in an adverse impact in the velocity zone. I truly don't. But it's your call. I'm just, want to highlight that it's not just compelling need, it's a weighing of all three criterion.
Okay.
And it's clearly your discretion, I'm not trying to push for this project, I'm just trying to emphasize that the waiver criterion is more than just number one.
No, that's fine, because that's, you know, I might not look at it 100%.
Sure.
With your experience, you're telling, okay, here's what I think, you know, your opinion was on it, okay, and that does make sense because, yeah, it's a small pool, it's the applicant came back, said it's going to be, you know, anchored into the ground with helical piers. And so, you know, that takes that issue off the table for me, you know. The groundwater issues, yeah, it's a little close, but I think if you've got helical piers holding this thing down, it's not going to go anything. If a storm does come, yeah, the first group of water coming in is going to hit that, but then if, like Alex said, if you're going up to 13 or 14, then the water's just going to go right over it. So it's the first, you know, impacts, initial impact, so.
The initial, yeah, sure. Yeah, the first storm surge.
Yeah, so, you know, based on what you said, yeah, I agree with you. Now I see, I see your point and it's a minimal impact.
Want to know other comments?
As with a job that we had two weeks ago, there are two options here. We can, I'll entertain a motion to close an issue. I would also entertain a motion to close and deliberate because there are a lot of issues here. There's a lot of thought that needs to be given to the waiver requirements, whether we solely focus on number one or take two and three into equal consideration. There is room for deliberation on Regulation 25.7. I still don't see the setback. So, you know, I'll entertain a motion either way.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close an issue on this project for Paul J. and Catherine M. Thurston, 25 Menapsia Road. With the changes is to realign the plantings per Drew's recommendation and change the planting type. I think that was one plant that we wanted changed.
Yes.
Yeah.
The arbor viti.
Yeah.
They're our appropriate species.
And be my motion.
Realign plantings. Is there a second to that motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion then? Is that off the table now? Because there's no second.
There's no second, so.
Could I make a motion to take the second tack, which would be to deliberate? So the motion would be to?
Close and deliberate.
Close and deliberate, which would likely happen at the next, beginning of the next hearing.
We would set the time and a date for those deliberations?
With a set time and date.
Either before our next scheduled hearing or perhaps as we did tonight, come in a little bit early.
Coming in early. So I'd be fine with that being attached to my motion and I, I think, well, I shouldn't even say until we get into it, but I, I'm hopeful that takes care of everyone's concerns for, for right now.
Right, to move forward for tonight.
Those are hard, those are hard choices that shouldn't be, at least in my world, shouldn't be made too quickly and I'm worried about, worried about 25, I'm worried about them all.
I know. So I'll second to close and deliberate.
Motion made and seconded. Motion now on the table for discussion. Any discussion amongst the commissioners?
Don't want to make a habit of coming in early every time. It's so hard.
But we can stay late.
You know, we could stay late.
I know, we got to continue like 15 right off the bat, but come on.
No, I had breakfast, lunch, and dinner here, come on. I totally get it.
Do we have a relevant discussion to the law?
Sorry.
Yes, this is.
No further discussion? I'll call for a vote. Steve?
I'll abstain.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carries. Thank you. Can we set a date and time for the deliberation?
It would be for 200.
And I could be, I didn't want to talk to you for a feeling.
Because we've already capped out the hearings for April 20th, so this would be May 4th at 6:06 PM.
Great. Is it possible to ask our keeper of the record? Is that where, I just want to know between now and then which chapter, which regulations and chapter, other than 25, that we need to pull up to prepare for next hearing? Is it pretty much what we did the last question, right?
Obviously, you'd want to spend a lot of time with Regulation 25 and the bylaw itself.
Did we cite that in the motion?
You don't need to add that.
You don't need to.
You don't need, all right.
No, that motion has been voted and carried, we're done with that, we're just setting the deliberation date. So we're looking at May 4th and the time on that is what, 6:0?
6:06.
6:06. Okay, great, thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Give you all. Now calling the 6:15 hearing for James Whitney, NJCJ LLC, 21 Metacomet Road. This is a proposed reconfiguration of a previously approved float and the installation of a pier section. Representative is Falmouth Engineering. This is continued from January 26th, in which the public hearing notice was not published. And it is also continued from February 9th and March 9th and is March 23rd as well. This is a notice of intent. Good evening, sir. Can I have your name for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is James Whitney, I'm the petitioner. My engineer, Mike Baselli from Falmouth Engineering, wasn't able to make it tonight, he had a conflict.
Okay.
At the previous meeting, we discussed the difference, the float modifications. And at that meeting, the harbor master had submitted some comments of a Chapter 91 issue with a float. Since then, we met with him, I think we resolved it, and he, as far as I know, submitted comments. I received a copy of them. So I don't think there was anything else that needed to be addressed as far as Mike was concerned, unless the board has any questions.
Okay, thank you. I believe it was float 402.
Yeah.
The mysterious 402, and the owner of that float was at our?
Mooring.
Or mooring, sorry. And the owner had come and discussed his concerns. We have a letter from the harbor master?
It's in your comments.
Okay. Okay, I'll open it up to commissioners for any questions, comments.
I think the harbor master's comments address, for me, everything that we were concerned with. It was, it was valid at the time. I think the harbor master said he has no issue with it and that the homeowner and mooring holder at 402 has agreed to have his mooring relocated to the south side of Mr. Whitney's property in order to accommodate the new float plan.
Yeah.
I think we're good. In my world, we're good.
Did the harbor master provide the location, the new location of mooring 402? Do we have?
It just says it's outside.
It says it's going to be outside the scope of this, it won't interfere with the navigation. And I'm assuming, given his expertise, it won't interfere with any other navigation as well.
Yeah, okay. Okay, any comments from the public? Hearing none? Drew, anything else you want to add? Nope, we're good. Would entertain a motion then, if there is one?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close an issue for 21 Metacomet Road. With the condition of a payment of the shellfish mitigation fee and the amount of $9,475.48 for the recommendation of the shellfish constable, the fee must be paid prior to the commencement of work.
Thank you, Alex.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion we have on the floor? Hearing none, I will take a vote. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Now calling the 6:18 hearing for Prescott White, 31 Fiddler Crab Lane. This is a proposed replacement of an existing retaining wall. Representative is Merrill Engineering and surveyors. This is continued from our last hearing, 3:23. There's a request to continue to 5:18 at 6 o'clock to allow more time for plan revisions based on the feedback that we gave to the applicant.
One second.
This is April 20th on here.
It should be, sorry, it should be May?
May 18.
May 18.
Yeah.
5:18.
Yeah, May 18.
May 18. Five 18, right?
Yes.
Is that what, did I say 418?
No, you said, you said it right.
You said correct, I just.
I just, I wasn't sure if that was the correct one we had here.
You said 42.
Oh, you did, all right.
Just making sure you're listening, Mr. Chairman.
My glasses, so I shouldn't have seen it right. Okay.
I'll make the motion to continue to 5:18 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah, second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So that motion carries unanimously and that will be scheduled for 5:18 at 6 o'clock. It's like being at home, everything's spread.
All right.
Now calling the 6:21 hearing for Jonathan J. Salimi, 202 Daniels Island Road. This is a proposed in-ground pool. Representative Marsh Matters, owner of record, MC Massachusetts NOM. Continued from 3:23, this is a notice of intent.
Yes, good evening, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mike Ball from Marsh Matters Environmental, representing John Salimi, the applicant. We were before you two weeks ago and we had some homework to do. We, with the pool designer and the surveyor, myself and Mr. Salimi, we looked hard at the property and the project and were able to, I believe, meet the commission's concerns. We dramatically reduced the amount of total project in the 50-foot buffer zone primarily by just really taking most of the hardscape out of the project. As you can see, what's remaining is basically a pool of water with coping around it, 18 inches wide, and then just a, on the north end there, or actually, yeah, it is the north end, just a three-foot wide pervious paver hardscape. So the hardscape that was connecting the pool area to the stairway that leads to the front of the house has been removed. That sitting wall, which was something we discussed, has been removed entirely. So we have moved the work limit landward a little bit, but we have bumped it out at the south end just to, just to address Commissioner Cook's concern about the proximity of the work limit to the excavation for the pool. So we've got a four-foot minimum separation between work limit and pool footprint. So, so I have a letter that I, that I could summarize. I submitted it with the revised plan. I did submit to Drew today the details of the mitigation areas. We did, we did identify four areas that we believe could be used for mitigation, that's what's shown on the screen there. That one right there being the largest one, in the original proposal, I, we had used that area, but I hadn't, we hadn't staked it out and we really weren't sure on the size. But now we have, at the site, staked out all the four separate mitigation areas and they do meet, the, the total area does meet the, your mitigation calculations for the amount of project in the 50 and in the, the inner 50 and the outer 50. So I'll just summarize, so the total hardscape was reduced by 60%. As I mentioned, the sitting wall is removed in addition to that, that expanded hardscape that was adjacent to the sitting wall. Let's see, primarily just leaving that 18 inches wide of coping around the pool. Total project footprint was reduced approximately by 20% to now below 800 square feet to 766. Originally, it was almost 1,100. I think most importantly, the total proposed amount of hardscape in the 50-foot buffer was reduced to, reduced significantly. That utility pad, which was in the 50-foot buffer zone, has now been moved out and moved closer to the road under a cedar tree. So that was another thing we did. I mentioned the work limit and then the mitigation areas. If you can bring those drawings up again, I'm not a landscape architect, so I kind of, I do the best I can in terms of showing you the amount of plantings and what they are. I did. can in terms of showing you the amount of plantings and what they are. I did pack these areas pretty well with native woody species. The plantings that are shown, and I have copies for, if you'd like to look at them, in addition to what's on the screen. But typically, I, I show vegetation at three foot on center, and I do have a small diversity of different woody species. I tend to go with, you know, dogwoods, blueberries, bayberries, even some holly here, things that you would find in the type of mixed oak pitch pine woodlands that are on the existing coastal bank and in the buffer zone. So I'll just mention that the closest point of the project to the coastal bank is 22 feet. There's a, the salt marsh, which is down at the base of the, base of the bank, is 82 feet away. Again, this was, this project is being proposed in an area of lawn that was originally approved back in 2001. The project did receive its certificate of compliance, so I think it's, I think it's, it's a, it's a good place to, to place this pool. I do not believe that there will be any impact to the bank itself. The bank will be able to continue to provide its functions, storm damage prevention, flood control, provision of wildlife habitat. Certainly, all the salt marsh performance standards are met. We're outside the flood zone. And I think I'll stop there and take any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you. My concern is this, Mike. Today at 12:06, email correspondence came out regarding a lot of these changes. And to be perfectly honest with you, with the amount of work I've had today on other projects, I haven't looked at any of this.
Okay, even the plans that were submitted last Friday?
I have those.
Okay.
But all this, the new stuff that you have up here on the screen, and the stuff that's contained in this email that came out at 12:06, and I also can quote you in that email saying, "I realize that this is a day of hearing info submission, and I'm hopeful that what is provided can be reviewed and considered." We're all volunteers, and we're all very busy. I, I don't feel at all comfortable proceeding until I have had a chance as chair to look through everything that was submitted as of 12:06 today.
Yeah.
So I would respectfully request a continuance.
Okay.
Give ample time.
I, I know at the last hearing, the, the main concern, I don't think we discussed plantings at all, but we did discuss the amount of mitigation that was required. So at that time, we were asking for a variance from your regulations. And so the discussion at that time was, I remember Chairman Columbo saying, "Can you really try hard to meet the, the square footage that we need?" And so we've done that. So, so what this is, is really just, it's showing those polygons and showing the species that are being provided in those polygons. It's not a tremendous amount of information. Like I said, there's, in that particular drawing right there, there's only four species. As I mentioned, it's three foot on center, which is typically as dense as you would want to go. If you look at the other drawings, also, we've got three foot on center. Dan, if you could just, yeah. So in this case, we've got the same species, except for the area where we're, we're using the lawn. So what, because that area is sunny, I just put in some rose. I put in some panicum vergatum, which is the switch grass, but also included some bayberry. I mean, I, I think, I fully respect you wanting to review all the details, but...
Dan, can you go back to that other image? This, this area right here, Mike?
Yeah.
Is, is this the area that was fenced in, the so-called dog kennel thing?
No. So we, the dog, if you look at the top of that drawing, you can see a fence line. There's a little X. That is the dog fenced area. So with the original, yes, with the original NOI, we have a separate drawing, which is not mitigation, but that was the revegetation area. So outside that fence, there's a, there's a very open area in the buffer zone, but it's not within that fence. So it's adjacent to that. So basically, this mitigation area would be abutting all the revegetation area inside that fenced area.
So the revegetation area is still to happen?
Oh, yeah.
Even though it's not shown on here?
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's something that has to happen, but it's not, it's not part of this, it's not in the calculation of mitigation. So it's a separate thing entirely, because it was a...
So you have mitigation square footage under mature trees?
Correct. Correct. So mitigation can come in many forms. I've been before you in many commissions before, where enhancement of habitat is considered mitigation, and basis species management is considered mitigation. And we do try to be as creative ways as we can to meet the requirements. You know, I think in this case, this is a good spot to enhance the existing understory where there is nothing other than an overstory of, of oaks. Okay, so that's how we meet our calculation. We are taking some lawn away from that area, and then some lawn, you can see on the end there, that 177 square feet, that's a, that's lawn at the end of the, of that little lawn area. Not leaving that much. And if I can remind you, the reason we, we're keeping this pool where it is, is because we want it to conform, since the house is non-conforming, the pool really shouldn't be any closer to the road than the front of the house. And so that's not, that's why we're not going any closer to the roadway with the pool footprint.
Because you'd rather get a waiver from our regs than someone else's?
I'm sorry?
Because you'd rather get a waiver from our regs than a different board?
It's not asking for a waiver from your regs. You know, if we were to go, if we were to bump that over another 15 feet, I think that would require ZBA review. I'm not entirely sure. We did get our Form 2 signed, and there's no required review currently. But if we were to move that, I think there would be.
So your first comments, when you first started speaking, was that it's, that you got it out of the 50-foot buffer zone, which feels very misleading, because then, in your narrative, although you don't show it easily to the eye on this plan, it's 22 linear feet from the top of the coastal bank?
Correct. Correct. So that's the closest, in that 22 feet is, is what is the existing woodland coastal bank buffer, right? So the coastal bank is that, is that brown line that you can see there. Again, there's a, there's a wooded buffer between the top of the coastal bank and the project. And again, this is within an existing lawn area that was approved. It had its certificate of compliance issued. So I think this project is a little bit different than others, in the fact that a previous commission approved that area of landscaping. Essentially, what I said in my letter is, we're basically putting a pool of water in a lawn area, removing that much lawn. The amount of hardscape that's being proposed is not going to generate a significant amount of stormwater. In fact, it won't contribute any. So we're just dealing with a pool of water in an existing lawn area. Frankly, I think removing lawn is always a good thing when we're near our embayments. I don't see this as impacting any of the resource areas on the property. I, my professional opinion is it does meet the performance standards. I don't even believe there's an impact at all to the resource area itself. And so mitigation, the word mitigation is reducing the severity of something. And so I think in this case, even though we're piecing together some mitigation areas, I think this project's due some flexibility.
I have a couple of questions. So...
Absolutely.
Uh, one is, under Drew's comments, you mentioned about proposed mitigation, chief a minimum of 75% of the calculated amount per the mitigation calculation chart. Was that met?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, okay, because I didn't see it, see the chart at all. Okay. So going back, another question. Why is the fence halfway down the bank? Why can't the fence be at the top of the bank and leave that whole mitigation area untouched?
Which, which fence?
There's a fence. It says proposed fence. Go right, just right above the coastal bank.
That, that is...
Because why, why wouldn't you put it at the top of the bank?
I'm just, I'm trying, I'm trying to see what the survey is trying to indicate there.
So nobody's walking and trampling through there, so...
Proposed fence. Hold on a minute.
So it starts at by the porch with, with that 50-foot buffer dimension. It goes down the bank.
Right.
Then it heads eastward. It goes along, just above the bank.
Oh, the proposed, yeah, I see. Pool fence, pool fence. Yeah.
Why wouldn't you just put it at the top of the bank and just leave that all vegetated? And, you know?
Right, because if you're putting in a fence, and your proposed limit of work, it's not actually accurately representing the limit of work if you're putting a fence behind it.
Yeah. I, I think, I think that proposed limit of work is specific to the pool footprint, the excavation, right? I typically don't consider installing posts for a, for a chain-link fence to be a significant disturbance. And so I frequently will see plans where the limit of work for pool projects is inside the, the, the pool security fence. Often, these pool security fences are along the...
If that's a pool security fence, why is that halfway, two-thirds way down the hill?
Right.
It should be at the top.
Yeah, point taken.
And then my other comment goes back to last time, Mike, is the pool's still right at the top of the bank. The pool wasn't shrunk. I understand the mitigation and, and, you know, when you move to get out of it, which is great, but the pool is still right there.
The pool is still not at the top of the coastal bank. It's at the top of the embankment in, the embankment which was in, which is in the 50-foot buffer.
Okay, I'm sorry if I used the word coastal.
Yeah, so it's, it is an embankment there. And again, this is, this is a level lawn area. And so, you know, I think where that pool footprint is right now, even though it's 22 linear feet from the top of the jurisdictional coastal bank, moving it landward a little bit would not impact the amount of impact that I think you're, you're perceiving there is on that bank. I just...
I just know excavators, you know, even if you put in the hay bales, sill fence, you're going to dig.
You're going to dig.
You know, and that, how, how deep is the pool?
Six footer.
Yeah, so they're going to go down at least seven feet, you know, deeper, and then it could undermine the top. You see the grade steps that drop off at the top of that bank?
Yeah.
That's what I'm worried about, and saying, all right, you know, that's right at the bank, so they're going to dig another three feet, so outside of that. Now they're, now they're going down the slope. You know, that's, you know, why does the pool need to be that size? Can't you shrink it another four feet and move it towards, you know, slide that radius up towards the house?
I know at the last...
Get away from the top of that, that bank.
I know at the last hearing, we did talk about the four-foot separation, and that's what we're, that's what we tried to show in this plan, is that we're providing that, that four feet. I, I take your point. I'm not a contractor, so I don't want to try to explain how contractors, I've seen pools dug. I do put my faith in contractors that they can, they can, they can accept and work within a limit of work, particularly on tight sites. They have access from the road, which is pretty good. Everything's going to be, obviously, access and digging from the landward side of the excavation.
And that, just my concern is saying, let's move, let's move it, get away from the top of that, of the grade changes. Not say the bank, but from lawn to a grade change.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just concerned about that part of it.
Yeah, I know this is going to be a gunite pool with a, kind of the sloped edges. So basically, they're just going to be carving out, not a straight shot down, but it's a, it's a curved bottom. But I, I take your point. I take your point.
Still going to be seven feet deep at that point.
Yeah. Are you concerned about a cave-in? Is that what you're...
Yeah, 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 in, in the bank, getting pushed down, digging, you know, I think. Because it's so close. There's no margin of error there.
Hmm.
You know, if you had another four feet, you made the pool four foot smaller, you know, kept it in the same plane, so you, at the 29.5 feet, and you slid it towards the house, well, take that whole radius and slid, slide it towards the house, four feet, then you'd have...
A little more.
You'd have a little room there to work with, and not be so tight and, you know, and, you know, for a possible issue.
Mm-hmm.
You see what, what issue? Could be multiple issues, you know. Could get a heavy rainstorm between the dig in, and by the time the crew gets there, and, you know, sill fence and hay bales could get overwhelmed if there's, if it, there's not enough soil there, you know. That's, you know, I'm just using that as a...
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, I think you're, we're talking construction feasibility rather than, than impact to the resource area itself. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Mike, I'm going to go back to my, my concerns. I was out on two different site visits this morning. I got home about quarter to one, and this is in my inbox.
Yeah.
And I had to run to make copies. And so if, if this were to wrap up tonight, I would abstain, because I just have not had ample, ample opportunity to get back on the site. Are all of these new mitigation areas that I'm looking at here, those colored, are those all staked on?
They're all staked on the site.
I'd like to go out and have this with me, and look at it, see what kind of exposure there is. I don't, you know, I just, I can't vote, is what I'm saying. And I'm listening to some other concerns, too, and I don't know if we're good with those. But anything else from the commission before I go to the public?
I would, I'd just share your, I, I worked all day long. I did not see the email until I got in here for that. So when I was at the site the first time, and I really would like to put my eyes on the stakes, so I would not want to vote tonight.
I agree with that, too. I'd like to see the site again.
Would I be...
I think everyone feels the same.
Yeah, it sounds a consensus here.
I'd like to get out there and see it. Just really...
Am I allowed to converse with the applicant? Could I talk to him for one minute?
Yeah.
Step out into the hallway, because I'm going to go to the public anyways for questions or comments.
Okay.
A minute will come back to us, and Dan will read in the agents.
Can I ask Steve one question while he goes out?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to refresh my memory. I thought we had said last time around, you had made that, I feel like we're revisiting the four-foot suggestion again, and I liked your idea at that time. Can you make it smaller, or can you move it closer? Are you saying tonight you would like to see both done ideally for the pool, the four-feet reduction?
Yeah, just to get a little more space between the lawn and where the grade changes.
Right.
Because to me, on a construction standpoint, it's too close.
Right.
There's, there's, there's going to be, there's going to be a whole bunch of things happening. There's no room for error.
Right, right.
If it was a different shape, if it was like a kidney, you could just shrink it up a little and sort of, yeah, just kind of...
Yeah, we, we, sorry, we, the kidney...
It's a kidney, but it's, it's got a little...
The kidney bean shape was because, you know, traditionally, pools are rectangular, right? And because of the shape of the lawn area, we turned it into a kidney bean to just kind of fit, to fit in that area. You know, obviously, it's a tight little envelope. But that was the reason why it was a kidney, a kidney bean. I'll step out just for a minute. Okay.
We're going to talk about you while you're gone.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
Any other comments from the public, other than Alex and Cindy, you know, with this?
Maybe we could hear from Dan?
Yeah, I would like Dan to read into the record the comments that we have from the agent.
So, proposed pool patio over existing lawn portion of proposed activities lie within the 50-foot buffer zone to the top of the coastal bank. However, entire area is previously disturbed, thus a waiver of standards is requested. Based on the most recent submitted plan, the applicant has reduced the footprint of the hardscaping with the 50-foot buffer zone from 484 square feet to 110 square feet. Pool utilities moved out of the 50-foot buffer zone. Required mitigation has been reduced to 1,201 square feet based on reductions of alterations within 50-foot buffer zone. Consultant has proposed additional mitigation areas to try and achieve the amount of mitigation based on our mitigation calculation chart. Consultant will provide more details on exact amounts of, of amounts at the meeting tonight. Agent recommends to close an issue should the proposed mitigation achieve a minimum of 75% of the calculated amount per the mitigation calculation chart.
What is that?
Thank you.
Yeah, how would we know that?
What is that?
They're over it.
He said, "Yeah, we hit it," but what is that?
What is it?
So for the disturbance they're having, they, they couldn't, at first, they could not meet all the standards.
I know, but what is the, what is the square footage? Like, what is the 75% of, yeah, what is that?
Oh, 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 I'd have to add that. Off the top of my head, I'm not too sure.
This plan is really hard to follow. I really liked...
So in essence, we're being asked to waive 25% of the allotted mitigation, because he's only at 75%?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, the waiver would be for the 25%.
Okay. And again, I, I think as a commission, to allow an applicant or their representative to submit vital information at, the timestamp on my email is 12:08 p.m., and we're sitting here at 5:30. I mean, I just, like I said, I would, I will abstain. I can't...
Yeah, you just can't.
How can I vote? I haven't even gone to the site. I asked him if it was staked. He said yes.
I haven't either.
I would take this mitigation plan. I would go to that site on a cloudy day, a sunny day, a rainy day. Is that mitigation going to survive when they're actually proposing it? I mean, I've been on the site, and there's, there's a lot of issues there.
And that's not a hardship to have a continuance. And that's not a hardship to have a continuance, in my opinion.
We could have a continuance. I would entertain a motion to, I know Alex will not like this, close and deliberate. Gives me time to read all...
Alex, we're doing so well with the close and deliberate.
I mean, when an applicant comes in and the chair of a board has no information before them, how do you, how do you set that as a precedent?
It's hard to get around. Yep.
You know, somebody else will come in and say, well, you know, I'm looking back at this particular job, and you guys just take information right up until the end.
Right, right.
It's not the way it works.
So, yeah. I think also, I really liked Steve's comments about the fence, and I think for the health of that buffer, this site would be best suited to have a fence around the flat area, around the pool, and then all of the mitigation plantings outside of it so that they aren't touched and it's allowed to naturalize and be a buffer. So, once we get to that point.
But you're saying as a condition, if we go to close an issue?
Yeah. Or if I'm not here next time, when you're talking about it.
Okay, in summary, while you were away...
Yeah.
Our assistant agent read into the record the agent's comments, and the agent had recommended to close an issue should the proposed mitigation achieve a 75% of the calculated amount per the mitigation calculation chart. And you've stated that that has been met.
We've met it 100%.
100%.
100%, yeah.
100%?
Yes.
Not 75?
No, yeah, 100%.
You're not asking for any type of a waiver whatsoever on the mitigation amount?
Yeah, we just, because we reduced so much in the 50, it brought, it dropped the numbers down, and so Canal Survey actually went and did the five-foot increments, calculated the amount, made the calculation. It turned out to be, I think it was 1,201 was required, and that's what we're providing. Yeah. Because I know that was something the commission was having a hard time, because the whole, what was the term? Compelling need. We just wanted that off the table.
While you were out, I mentioned to the commission that accepting what I consider to be critical information, mitigation areas that we had no knowledge of where they were going to be, what the species were going to be at such a late notice, I would have to abstain. As a committee, as a chair of a board, if I have to abstain because I haven't been given the information, it sets a very dangerous precedent going forward.
Yeah.
So as chair, I will entertain three different motions. I would entertain, I would entertain one to close an issue. If that does come, then I would certainly abstain from voting. I would entertain a motion to close and deliberate, which would give us time to look at all of this information. Or I would entertain a motion to continue, which in essence gives us the same thing, only we would then deliberate at a regular meeting.
May I, can I interject for a second?
You, just discussing at this point.
Okay. So I'm trying to think about other properties. We have absolutely allowed for the mitigation plans to be hashed out with Drew. So it changes it that it's not, they're not requesting a waiver and that they're providing 100% of the mitigation...
Right.
In my mind. So we don't need to, sure, we can get into the weeds. I think we spend a lot of time looking and reviewing, and we would have. I, I, I feel like we can let Drew figure out the mitigation responsively if we are able to condition some things, but I don't know, I don't, I mean, I don't know how we would condition moving the pool for, for construction.
I would make a motion to continue this, to have the fence be moved in the pool.
Yeah.
And then come back and then, you know, like, I agree with you, Drew can verify the mitigation like we've done before.
Yeah.
We can, I'll do site visits again and then come back and say, okay, yeah, this makes sense, and we vote on it.
And that's kind of one of the reasons this was submitted today. I have obviously been before you a lot of times, and a lot of my projects involve mitigation. And in my experience with Drew is if something's hashed out, and we're demonstrating, we've met the areas, I've been able to follow up with Drew, go on to site, review plants. That was kind of part of the, the motion was to allow Drew and I, we've, over 25 years, we've got a great relationship, and, and so that's kind of what I was hoping, that the commission be willing to entertain. I mean, it looks very fancy and detailed, it's not very complicated, but, you know, I would request...
It is, but you don't see it.
Sorry?
It is complicated when you see it as you come to a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I'd love to talk about the, the plants and spacing if you'd like right now.
So no, not right now. I think, again, we got it last minute, it's not fair that we got it last minute. I think we should, I, can I make a motion? Are we there yet?
There's already a motion on the floor.
And if I, if I could just summarize what I, I spoke to Joe out there, and he, we are gonna maintain a four foot, we're gonna tweak it so there's at least four feet from the top of the slope to the, to the footprint. So right now, I think we've got about, we bumped out that, that work limit, so the work limit is actually slightly on the slope, but if we move that work limit to the top of the slope, right, and then we move that pool, the hardscape portion of coping, four feet from the top of that slope, which would move the pool roughly two to three to four feet, I think that would address your, your concern.
So...
Along with the fence, that too.
Yes, yeah.
Can you condition it?
No, I think, I think we can continue it, I think we can get it on a plan and see it all as we're asking for it.
On a revised plan.
We have a chance to go out there and look at everything.
Yeah.
Let me ask a follow-up question. I know the last time I was on the site, there are a couple of white pines that were just lopped right off. Is there anything new in here that's going to mitigate the loss of those trees?
I remember you mentioning that at the, there was some concern at the last hearing. I don't think any of the photographs, I took a lot of photographs, but in the filing itself, I don't have any photographs of those pines. It's something I did not note, but, but it's, that's something I think could certainly be, I think at the last hearing, I said it could be, it could be a condition that we plant four small white pines. Are these like, have they been coat hanged, what they, you know, when you kind of chop them?
Somebody took a top for a Christmas tree.
Yeah, topped them, yeah.
I think we refer to it as midnight vista pruning.
Yes, yes, midnight landscaping, yeah. So those are, what do we call those? I think we call those coat racking, coat racking trees.
It's a follow-up concern that I have, because I'm not hearing anything additional about that.
Yeah. I think simple would be to just add a condition that so many white pine trees, that's such a minor, I think it's a minor detail. I know it's, to the commission, it isn't, but...
Loss of any tree is not a minor detail.
Correct, correct.
Is there a motion on the floor?
There is not a motion. Steve said if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion, and I haven't called for one.
I see. I bet.
But you know, you know where we all stand, I think, are we all set to entertain a motion? Would you like me to do that? Certainly do it. Chair is open to a motion of any type.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the hearing for Jonathan J. Salami, 202 Daniels Island Road to, to change the fence location, shorten, shorten, move the pool, and replace cut white pines with, oh...
Show any enforcement issues.
Yeah.
To show the enforcement issues.
Show the enforcement issue.
Okay. So I'm just getting these down. Change the fence location.
Yeah.
The pool you wanted...
Shorten the pool location.
Shorten the pool location.
To have four feet from the lawn area to where the grade changes.
Okay.
Right.
I think we were talking about top of slope, four feet, which would bump everything landward.
Top of slope.
Four feet, okay. And you wanted to put those pines in that were lopped off?
Yeah, I think, deal with the enforcement issues on site, because it's not just the white pines, right?
Right, no, it's that whole fenced in, what I call the dog pen.
Yeah.
So you want that in the motion as well?
It's a motion, but I think so.
Yeah, we're covering everything. Let's, let's cover everything in one fell swoop, right? And take care of it, and then we can come back and vote at that time.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to clean this up, so that has to be...
So if everything's taken care of.
That entire area has to be mitigated. I mean, the idea that we did not issue an enforcement order on it was to blend it with this notice.
Correct.
And it was gonna be taken care of, but is it, I guess, is the question.
Yeah, if it's, if it's in, if it's in the order, then it will be taken care of.
It's an exhibit, the plant, the revegetation of that fence scenario is an exhibit in the original NOI. So that's, yeah, so that's, it's in there.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Are you done?
I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, we need a date for the continuance.
So the date would be May 4th at 6:09.
That would be May 4th.
To May 4th at 6:09 PM.
5:04, 6:09.
Could we, is it, could we discuss that date? The reason I ask is because this is in the middle of a real estate transfer. As you know, purchase and sale agreements have deadlines, sometimes very hard. Would it be possible to have the continuance in two weeks?
The problem, Mike, is that we had seven hearings tonight that had to be continued to our next hearing schedule, which is April 20th, because we'll lose jurisdiction.
Okay.
Now, that really fills that agenda completely. That's why we've been moving some of these to 4, 5/4 and 5/18. We have a lot going on here. And I get it, I'm totally sympathetic to what you're up against, but at the same time, we're up against the same crunch. I mean, I'm out doing site visits the day of a hearing, just to make sure everything's set, and then files start coming in, everybody's busy. So that's the next possible slot, May 4th, 6:09. And that, that is open, you're good with that? That's what we have. Okay, that's the motion.
I'll second.
There is a second. Alex, thank you. Motion is made and seconded, it's on the floor for any further discussion amongst the commissioners. Hearing none.
Answer.
Hearing none, I will take a vote. Steve?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carries unanimously. Before you leave, you're clear on the different things for that continuance that the commission...
Could we just review them quickly?
Sure, let's, let's make sure that every T is crossed, every I is dotted.
Okay, so number one would be the fence location, number two would be the pool, to move it, shorten it.
There was a four foot requirement there?
Four, four foot back from the stop?
Four foot, yeah.
Right, okay.
Four foot from the top of the slope.
Top of slope.
Top of slope, okay. Replace the cut white pines and the dog fence area to mitigation of it.
To deal with the enforcement issues.
And that, you said, is on the plan.
That's in the plan, yeah, so that's addressed, so...
But can you show it on the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It was submitted.
Yeah, it's, it's shown as, just like I showed the mitigation area, there's something that looks...
Right, can it, can it, can we put it all on one plan for next time? Can you put it all on one plan so we can just see it all, how it's gonna be?
It is on the plan.
One plan. Everything is on one plan.
You want to show individual plants on that plan?
No, I want this plan to show the enforcement area, to show the mitigation, to show the fence, and to show the pool.
Okay.
All of the changes that you're being asking.
So, Mike, you see where you got the 853 square feet highlighted?
Yes.
Can you highlight the dog fence area in a different color?
So that, okay, so that's clear...
So it stays out on a plan? That's what you're looking for, Alex.
I see.
Right. So, you know, you don't have to show, because you have it on your individual plan, but as long as you highlight the area in orange or, you know, or different color.
Okay, so that, so what you're saying is that we've got a little call-out note there, refer to MME, re- revegetation plan, that's not sufficient.
Well, it just, it's not as clear as on one plan, so if you see, these, this is your new mitigation in light green.
Yeah.
If you say the mitigation for that dog fence area and...
Not mitigation.
Wow, okay, planting.
Plant, revegetation.
Revegetation.
Restoration.
So when they go out to do the compliance, they can look at one plan and say, okay, are all of these objectives met? Looking at one plan, make it easier on the staff, they go out there and they have one set, one plan that they're checking out.
Okay, I, I thought, I thought you were suggesting take the plantings, because that would be too much.
Just put a different color, make it, you know, light pink or yellow or whatever.
Yeah.
So you see two distinct areas, one is a revegetation area, one is new mitigation area.
So different, different color than the mitigation areas.
Correct.
And could I also encourage you to get it in 48 hours prior to the hearing?
48 hours? Probably, probably more than that, right?
Well, at, at the very least, is that hard to meet?
No, I don't think so.
No.
No. I guess typically, it's the, it's the Friday before, right, the Friday, close of business before, which we did submit the revised plan, it's just the, the detailed mitigation hadn't been, yeah.
Can I ask one last question? I know the property is in a transfer process, new owners are coming in. That fenced in area that I just called the dog pen, that whole fence is staying, it's not coming out?
No, it is coming out.
It is coming out.
If you'll ask, yes, it'll come out.
Has that been proposed on the plan?
I believe it's a note on the revegetation plan, fence to be removed, but we can make that, make, make that clear.
I was just wondering, we're gonna revegetate that whole area, what's the purpose of the fence?
Could've found the words.
There would, that's, that's why we're removing the fence, so it's then fully contiguous, abutting the natural, naturally vegetated buffer.
So the whole thing's coming out?
They don't, they don't, they don't have a dog, they don't need a fence. Unless you want to keep it there, but I don't, I'd be surprised if you wanted to keep an illegal fence, you know? I can add a note, that fence, so it's very clear on this plan...
To be removed, yeah.
To be removed.
Yeah, perfect.
Trying to make sure every T is crossed. Okay, we're good?
Two, three, four, five. I've got five, six items, I think I'm pretty clear.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, we're good?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, it's okay. You still have a wife.
These are just continuing things.
No offense, that was terrible.
That was a cheap shot, really.
Now calling the 624 hearing for Jack Foster, Allison K. Foster and Lauren C. Foster, 31 Wheelhouse Lane. This is a proposed raise and replace existing dwelling, replace pool and patio, new gravel driveway, landscaping and hardscaping, Representative Cape and Islands Engineering. This hearing will be continued to 4/20 at 6:12 because the notice was not published in the 331 Mashpee Enterprise. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, second.
Second.
Thank you, Erin. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, Steve?
Yes.
Marjorie?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Motion carries, and for the record, Alex had to step out. Now calling the 627 hearing for Timothy Leadham, trustee Osprey Island nominee trust, 71 Monomoskoy Road, proposed raise and replace single-family dwelling, landscaping, hardscaping and mitigation plantings, Representative Cape and Islands Engineering. This is continued to 4/20/23 at 6:15. Public hearing notice was not published in the Mashpee Enterprise of 331. This is a notice of intent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, second.
Second.
Can share responsibility, Erin? I'll give that one to Erin. Seniority, seniority rules or something. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
No, I'm trying to move it.
I have a couple of things that I want to have on the record. I received a call from an abutter. Actually, it was from the president of Seabrook Shores Homeowners Association, which encompasses all of Bay Shore Drive and I believe, I forget that of the little street that goes down. And the abutter that was notified, was notified through certified mail by Cape and Islands Engineering. The notification was printed on town stationery and it had my name on it.
Eek!
That's a no-no.
That's a no-no.
It's as simple as that. The night I got the phone call, I was on the phone with town manager. I told him, this is not allowed, period. He says, absolutely, they will be notified. So for the record, Cape and Islands Engineering is not to use town stationery with any commissioner's name on it. If they want to send out notices, tell people what's going on, that's wonderful, that's their prerogative, but not with our stationery and not with our names on it.
How could that not just be an obvious?
And I believe the owner of Cape and Islands Engineering was contacted about this, either through town council or through town manager or through Drew.
I do know through Drew, the other aspects, I'm not 100%, but through Drew, he was contacted directly, yeah, to address that issue. So it's a, it's a non-issue from now on. They're done doing that.
Good, because that was just, that took up, I'm going to say conservatively, probably four hours of my time that Friday night between, the person got ahold of me, they showed me the, a picture of the posting, and then I looked at it and I thought, where's this coming from?